Start the recording, please. Thank you. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Covington City Council meeting for Tuesday, January twenty-third. In compliance with state law, city council's special and regular meetings are being held in a hybrid format with in-person, telephonic, and virtual options for public viewing and participation. With that, we'll call this meeting to order, and Krista, if you could please call the roll.
Councilmember Solis?
Here.
Councilmember Porter?
Here.
Councilmember Hartsock?
Here.
Councilmember Hardhouse?
I am present.
Councilmember Samomo?
Here.
Mayor Protem Smith? Mayor Wagner?
Present.
We have a quorum, your honor.
Thank you. I'd look for a motion to excuse Mayor Protem Smith.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to excuse Mayor Protem Smith. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor Protem Smith has been excused. If everybody could please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for that. Next up is approval of agenda. Regan, do we have any changes tonight?
No changes, mayor.
Thank you. I'd look for a motion to approve. The agenda is posted.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda has been approved. Next up is reports of commissions. First up is Economic Development Commission. Josh, welcome.
Thank you. Happy New Year to everyone. This is going to be short and sweet. We have, we typically CEDIS combines our December and November meetings in early December, so we actually have our first meeting of the year coming up this Thursday, so much of this is maybe something you already heard. I'll give you kind of a synopsis of what we're looking at. For two thousand and twenty-four, we're going to continue our business-to-business initiative where CEDIS members have been assigned a certain area within the Covington Business District. We're making connections with the various business owners really around three concepts at this point. One is to continue to advance and educate in the SEP TED principles that the city has invested in and subsequently much of the business community has invested in. We have a new concept called the Pick It Up Pledge that we're asking our business, our business owners to volunteer themselves into, which is really just making sure that they're keeping the areas around their businesses clean, tidy. We know that crime is drawn to areas where it looks like people don't care, so we want to make sure it looks like we care. That's kind of what we're doing there. And then, of course, you've heard a lot about this, and we're going to continue to work towards developing what we call our Downtown Association. You might remember that we're going virtual with that initially, and we have a really great new CEDIS member who is kind of championing that technology for us and has volunteered to be the moderator, which is a really important position. So we will continue those efforts as well. This next meeting, we have a group coming to speak to us around crime prevention strategies. It's the company that installed all the camera system in this center. That's sponsored by Justin Van Landshut. And so we're really excited to hear what they have to say, probably a little bit different than SEP TED, which is kind of crime prevention by design. This is more like, what can we do just to make ourselves less vulnerable? Things like that. So probably have a pretty strong tint towards putting cameras everywhere, I would imagine, but that's okay. And then, one of the other things that we're, we've talked about the last meeting is supporting the chamber with their upcoming, I don't know the dates, we'll have to talk to the chamber about that with their restaurant, weekend wine walk. And so we want to support the chamber however we can, so. And that's that.
Perfect. Does anybody have any questions for Josh? Josh, thank you very much. Really appreciate hearing the updates from CEDIS.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great evening.
You too.
Next up is Youth Council. Katie, welcome.
Good evening, council. Um, kind of short, kind of sweet. We're doing the Great Kindness Challenge, which we posted on the City of Covington Instagram. We have a teenaged version where we kind of wrote down some of the things that were different from the elementary school version, just to cater more towards our teenage audience. We're also doing this weekend, the Youth Action Day, talking to our representative Chris Stern, Deborah Entman, and Senator Claudia Kaufman. We're really excited to kind of voice our concerns and also the City of Covington's concerns. We really look forward to it, and we're preparing a lot of questions to ask. Last and certainly not least, we are picking up the Student Art Month again, and that's going to start pretty soon here. At the next meeting, we're going to do some art sorting, and it's one of our favorite things to do as a council, so thank you so much. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions for Katie? Yes, Debbie.
I just want to thank you and the council on the work that you're doing on the Kindness Challenge. I took that, shared it today and said, us adults need to participate in this challenge and make our world a kinder place, too. So, thank you.
Joe, did you have a question?
I just want to know if we can get them to advocate for funding for parks while they're down there. It's really hard for adults to say no to kids when we want park money. Just saying, if you, if you can get our representatives, you know, just wrap it around your finger a little bit, it'd be nice.
I can certainly flash in a smile.
There we go.
Is it in-person this year that you'll be down in Olympia?
Yeah.
That's so awesome.
Thank, anybody else? No? Katie, thank you very much, and thank you to your entire Youth Council. Appreciate everything you do.
Good evening.
Thank you. Next is Arts Commission. Riley, welcome.
Thank you. Happy to be here. I like it when Patty can't make it, because then I get to look all emotional. So, for the Arts Commission, we actually just had our special meeting for the year. We call it a retreat. It sounds like we went somewhere fun. We were in that room over there. But we just had that where we went over our big ideas. As, as a part of the Arts Commission, we have to come up with ideas on ways we can actually install art within the city. So we have a new set of ideas, and hopefully there'll be some coming through that we'll pass on to approve. But right now, we're in that phase where we're just trying to research as much as possible and see what's feasible with our, with our budget and with our city. So that's been really exciting to talk about. We finally did lock down the two sculptures. I believe you guys saw them at one point. We locked down the two that, that we're going to have installed, and so that's all in motion. We also have another round of utility wraps for two thousand and twenty-four. We have a theme for that. So that's exciting. And then, outside of that, we're really excited about the Youth Council's Crosswalk Initiative, because we had the same idea at the same time, so hopefully piggybacking on that later as that develops. Other than that, nothing, nothing else new to report, so.
Jennifer?
Yeah.
What is the theme for the box wraps?
The theme? So, but you weren't going to ask it, because I forgot. And that's just me being honest.
It's, it's all good.
I can look it up for you.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
I'll look it up and just say it. Any other questions? Okay, I'll make sure to get that information and have it emailed along.
It's just proof for, for listening to your reports.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much for being here, Riley.
Yes.
Tell the entire commission, thank you.
I will.
Thank you. Equity Cultural and Social Justice Commission. Don't see anybody here. Is anybody online for that? No. Human Services, we do not have a report tonight. And then Parks and Recreation, Laura Morrissey, welcome.
Hello. So we had one meeting in December, a special meeting to hear from consultants about the Jenkins Creek Trail Project. So that is, you guys, I'm sure we're aware that there was a survey out to the community in December. I believe it's closed now. And so the consultants came to meet with the commission, and in the middle of that survey, went through the survey questions, actually not in the middle. They, I think they had opened the survey for maybe two days. And then we met with them, and so we went through the questions. We suggested just some small refinements. These consultants are, they're sharp. Like, they, they really had it all pretty locked down, and they were asking me, as somebody who is an athlete and a runner and goes through the whole city on foot probably once a month, and I was like, I don't really have a lot of suggestions for you. You guys covered it all. So they've done a really good job in being thorough in creating those questions related to the trail system. That is, that survey, I believe, is now closed. The consultants have that data. We will hear back from them in a future meeting. I can't remember which one, maybe February. And that was really the bulk of the December meeting, so I just wanted to pull out some things from the staff report, again, from December. You may not know, but in the Aquatic Center, the private rental attendance for two thousand and twenty-three was the highest ever at the Aquatic Center. Also, at the Aquatic Center, just because they're not going to outdo themselves in one way, they just got to keep on going. They were on record at the beginning of December to surpass their attendance record that was set in two thousand and sixteen. And at the time, when that was set, I remember, they were like, we cannot do this again. There's no possible way we can fit more people in here. Apparently, they did. So just for the numbers, the former attendance record was a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and eighty-four patrons who came through the Aquatic Center doors. I don't have the exact numbers for two thousand and twenty-three, but they were poised to break that at the beginning of December. Uh, Founders Park, previously SOCO, if you've driven past there, you have seen that there has been progress. Finally, the ballards and items that were backordered have gotten in. There's a possible completion date at the end of February, but you know, it's winter, weather-dependent, backorder item-dependent, et cetera. The Jenkins Creek Park project, I think they're still dealing with some cultural resource things that were found in the ground and making sure that that is dealt with appropriately. I know there's some right-of-way requirements that they're just working through paperwork-wise in the city, and as soon as those are dealt with, then it goes back out to be rebid. And then also, you guys heard the consultants bring to you the Aquatic and Rec Center report. You guys got the exact same thing that we did. You made the exact same decisions that we did, so it's always good when we're in lockstep together. In theory, their report will be finished in January, and so that will eventually bubble up to the surface for both us and you again. And that, I think, is the gist of it. We had a couple of people leave the commission in January, so we're looking forward to getting some fresh faces in our, in our group. So, any questions?
Anybody have any questions?
Beth?
Are you liberty to say what the cultural items were?
I actually don't even know.
Oh, okay.
All right.
So, yeah. I mean, I can take a guess, but
Okay.
and they're not like big. It's just one of those things that they, I think, better safe than sorry type of thing that's going, so.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Laura, thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Have a great evening. Next is Planning Commission. David, welcome.
Welcome, City Council. We had the following agenda items for the Planning Commission meeting on January eighteenth. That was our last one. Special Order of Business was for the meeting was for the election of the vice chair to replace one of the members that left, and the new vice chair is Kenar Aronson. There was also a public hearing for the Comprehensive Plan Parks Element. The Plan Commission, after the public hearing, adopted the decision criteria and the staff findings for the Comp Plan two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and thirty-five's findings, and made a recommendation to the City Council to amend the current Comprehensive Plan two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and thirty-five to adopt the approved Parks, Recreation, and Open Spaces, the PROS Plan, by reference, to improve the process for updating the city parks, cities' park impact fees, and the references to the Parks and Recreation Department Capital Program. It was remarked in the meeting that this will really enable the city to be nimble in the timing, so they get that PROS Plan in there, and so we can continue to make those fees possible in the year two thousand and twenty-four. The next steps are the proposed docket item. It's LU twenty-three zero 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 one, and the recommendation of the Planning Commission to be provided to the City Council for consideration at an upcoming City Council regular meeting. The two other things we did in the meeting was to review the draft Comprehensive Plan elements for housing and also the planned elements for land use. Quite a bit of good discussion we've had, questions after the presentation. The preliminary efforts for the vision, goals, and policies for each element have been done to make this an organized and thoughtful package due to the city planning staff and to Burke Consulting. Please note that Thursday meeting had some major weather, logistics, and technology issues because of the freezing rain, and the AV equipment in the city council chambers was not working properly. Maybe gremlins? I don't know. But anyway, they couldn't get the day historic at all. So, we, we did complete the meeting by having it in the back of the, of the, of the room, and kudos must be given to the excellent efforts and the flexibility for this hybrid Planning Commission meeting by the city planning staff. And we had a full Planning Commission attendance and a successful Zoom meeting when it all got done. Significant agenda items for the next Planning Commission meeting on February fifteenth is to review the draft, draft Comp Plan elements for planned foundations and for capital facilities. We are also going to have preparations for the upcoming joint study meeting we're going to have with the City Council on February twenty-seventh regarding the two thousand and twenty-four Draft Work Plan Legislative Mandates overview. We had a Gantt chart that we showed at the meeting. We have over, we have seventeen items that we're dealing with right now at the beginning of the year. So we are really very, very busy, and we'll, we'll be discussing that further at that Work Plan Legislative Mandates overview. Glad to provide you with the status update for the Planning Commission. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions for David? Thank you very much for the update. Really appreciate it. Have a great evening, David. That concludes our Reports of Commission. Next up is Public Communication, a presentation by Seattle's Union Gospel Mission, Brian. Welcome. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you for allowing us to be here. So in ten minutes, I am going to attempt to go through everything that we do, and with me is Lisa Maga, the Vice President of Women and Children's Ministries, who's going to help me answer some questions that we presume may come up at the end of this presentation, so let's get started. So Seattle's Union Gospel Mission has been around for ninety-one years. Proud heritage. It all started with this, bringing love to Jesus and a hope for a new life to our homeless neighbors. We believe this, that, that it's, you can survive three days, three days without water, three weeks without food, but you cannot survive a second without hope. And we believe that in helping restore relationships. We also believe our vision, every homeless neighbor beloved, redeemed, and restored. Well, how do we do this? We do this in a few ways. First of all, we do it through what we call survival. So we have outreach teams that are in King County from nine o'clock in the morning until midnight, and what we're doing is building relationships. So in the evening, when we're there, we're building relationships, going to the deepest, darkest places throughout King County to do that. We do that through providing services and building relationships. The day team then goes out and helps to provide service, helps to provide transportation to those services and identify the resources through our referral intake. All right. We also have a shower trailer, and we have seen the shower trailer provide so much dignity to individuals, and it takes a lot of trust for somebody to go inside of a horse trailer and take a shower. And it's so amazing to see that relationship and to build those relationships. And then, one of our best is our mental health. We just recently created a mental health department, and our mental health department is doing exactly that. They're creating opportunities for us to have actually licensed mental health to go out on, that will be able to go out on our search and rescue, be able to be in our programs, be able to be in our shelters, provide some critical mental health support. So from survival, then we move to what we call stabilization. Stabilization is our enhanced shelters. We have an enhanced shelter for men. We have an enhanced shelter for women and children, and you may be familiar with Kent Hope, just down the street, providing enhanced shelter. The difference between an enhanced shelter and a regular shelter is case management. We're able to walk with them. We're able to help them to work through barriers, be able to move them forward in their life, whether it is to go into our recovery program, whether it's to get into housing, get jobs, get education, whatever that is, to be able to walk with them to do that. We also have our bridge programs and our lane programs. Bridge program is an opportunity for somebody to come in and say, if you need some recovery, give them thirty days, kind of get through, work through things. We're working with them to help get them stable and provide resources that they need to be able to do that. We also have some amazing men working in the prisons and the jail system. So, Kent, jail, we have some guys that are working there and building relationships, because we have seen the effects. I heard a statistic the other day that sixty percent of individuals that are coming out of jails end up homeless, and it's because we're not connecting them immediately to services. So having that ministry has been super effective. We also have an amazing dental and legal services. Dental provides all kinds of dental care. You name it, we provide it for individuals on the street. Then we have our legal service. Our legal service is helping to, again, remove barriers. A lot of barriers for legals coming in to help people to, to, to restore hope back to them as they move forward and help to eliminate some of those opportunities. Whew. From stabilization, we move into recovery. So we have a men's recovery program, and we have a women and children's recovery program. The men's program is our downtown Seattle. That's what we're known for most. We also have one over by the airports. We have two recovery facilities. And then we have a women and children's recovery center in, in Rainier Valley, in Othello. And, and I just forgot to mention that we opened a new women and children's, a one-hundred-bed enhanced shelter in Othello, and a lot of the women that are coming through Kent Hope be transported to this beautiful, amazing shelter. And I talked to the mayor a couple days ago about getting you the tour of that facility. I think it'd be amazing to, to get you down there and let you see that facility. So our recovery programs are helping to, helping men and women with recovery, but also working with the children, providing counseling, providing support to those children, be able to get them back in school, be able to get, work on some education pieces, and, and to help them with parenting classes and other things to help really restore those relationships. And seeing, seeing children come back to their mothers is the most moving. It, I experienced it once, and I said, I want to experience it every time when a child comes in to a whole place and a mother is standing there. Oh my gosh, the place just erupts. And just seeing, you know, it's just like a movie, just seeing them all and the children be restored at that moment is so amazing. We also have a dual diagnosis program in Capitol Hill, so it's recovery and it's also mental health. So we have licensed mental health counselors that are working with men in recovery as well to helping them. And then, our post-graduation, we recently started an aftercare department, and the theme for aftercare, or the philosophy of aftercare is we're going to walk with you for life. So once you go through our recovery program, and not just our recovery program, but we're working with men and women in other recovery programs, be able to provide continual counseling, continued support, helping them provide services, getting connected to resources, getting connected. One of the biggest things we see is somebody leaves our facility, that if they're not connected either through mentorship, connected to a church family, connected to an AA group, or something of that nature, we need that support. It may need that support, and so we're continuing to provide that and to help them through to continue on with life and be a resource for them as well. And that is the rundown of our facilities. So we'd love to take any questions that you may have.
Anybody have any questions for Brian? Jennifer?
I'm curious. I hear women and children, and then I hear men. What about men with children without the associated woman that I hear in the women and children? What, what are resources for families of that nature?
Yeah, I mean, we work, you know, we just talked about our relationship with Vine Maple. We work side by side with them, and it kind of back and forth both ways to, in order to allow space for the men and children in there, sometimes we'll work to take some of the women and children into ours to be able to provide that.
Okay.
Or in working with other agencies as well to be able to provide that.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else?
Beth?
So, the, the after-program connections that you're talking about, church families.
The after-program connections, are you finding that you have, there's enough mentors, and there's enough of those connections for these folks? Or, I mean, we, we hear about how behavioral services and things are often lacking, lacking. Is that it?
That's a great question, and we will sign you up, because there is not enough needs. We're, we're just constantly looking, and you can, you can pipe in any time for, but we're always constantly looking for more mentors and get people connected. We get connected to people with, with churches, like Real Life and, and other churches, be able to get them in someplace that's solid for them, be able to get them into a place that's kind of nonjudgmental and, and working to help that, and to pull mentors from those agencies as well, and we're always looking for more mentors. Yeah.
So just as a follow-up, and if you can't answer it, if you had a magic number, like to make it complete and make it whole, what would that be? Or what percent? I don't know. Might be kind of loaded question. I'm just, I'm just curious how what the gap is.
We have seven, seven men and eight women graduating on Thursday night in the next two weeks. And so ideally, we would want to mentor for each and every one of them. And we have our church engagement teams and our volunteer teams that are out there continuously showing them what we do and what we need. And so a total number, I think we had three hundred and twenty-two graduates in the last year, and so we would need three hundred and twenty-two.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, okay.
Thank you, Beth. Debbie?
Thank you. I had a question about your mobile services, the shower trailer and your mental health services. I would imagine that there are a lot of communities out there in need of those. Do you have communities on wait lists, or how would, if a city felt that they had a need for you to come in and provide those, how would we go about that?
Yeah, there is quite a wait list, and some of it's due to staffing right now, but we are taking it out two days a week. But in some of the cases, we've had volunteers that operate and run that shower trailer. So we're always open to seeing those opportunities to be able to do that, to train somebody to be a part of that. Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, we want it to be utilized, that's for sure.
Great. All right, thank you.
Anybody else? I want to thank you. It's hearing what you have to say, because a lot of people don't know what Union Gospel Mission does, and getting the word out, and I learned a lot with our meeting that you, Scott, and I had about union gospel, and then even more tonight. I really appreciate that, and I will take you up on that opportunity to tour the, the new Othello station. So we can coordinate with Krista if anybody else wants to take a tour, so it sounds like the entire council would like to, to take that tour.
Yeah, good.
All right. Thank you very much. I really appreciate both of you coming tonight, so thank you.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Yep. Have a great evening. You're welcome to stick around, please. All right, next up is our first public comment period. Speakers will state their name, address, and organization. Comments are directed to the City Council, not the audience or staff. Comments should be related to city business. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate and are limited to no more than four minutes per speaker. For attendees participating virtually, click the raise hand button in Zoom. For attendees participating by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand. Once the city grants you permission to speak, press unmute if participating virtually, or dial star six to unmute if participating by phone. With that, Lisa, did you want to, oh, you already gave your presentation. Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience wishing to address council during this public comment period? Is there anybody online wishing to address council? Seeing nobody raise their hand or approach the podium, we will have a second opportunity for public comment towards the end of this meeting. Thank you. Next is approval of the consent agenda. Items consisting of items C one and C two, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda has been approved. Going to new business, first item is to consider appointments to the Parks and Recreation Commission. Does council wish to take action tonight?
I move, I move to appoint Mackenzie Woods to fill position number three on Parks and Rec Rec Commission with a term expiring January thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-seven.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to appoint Mackenzie Woods to fill position number three. Beth, would you like to speak to your motion?
Um, I, the overarching theme there is to make sure she wants to make sure that there are cleans and safe spaces for the community to enjoy. And she has enough experience and has two young boys, so being able to, to speak to what some of the needs are and be able to So being able to to speak to what some of the needs are and be able to contribute and build those connections. And being a liaison between the Parks and Rec and Council is one of the things that she would be good at doing, so, yeah.
Thank you, Beth. Jennifer, would you like to speak to your second?
Yeah, um Mackenzie has experience in the acquisition of capital projects, playgrounds and experience working with nonprofit boards. Um, I love to get, you know, tagging on to what Beth was just saying, uh you guys know that I love the for all. And I circled and underlined that. Mackenzie said that um clean, safe spaces for all for many years. And uh was really excited about getting to, as an ambassador, talk to people and get uh to know her neighbors. I think Mackenzie would be a a great addition to the Parks and Rec team.
Thank you, Jennifer. Is there anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? All right, it's been moved and seconded to appoint Mackenzie Woods to fill position number three on the Parks and Recreation Commission with a term expiring January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-seven. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Mackenzie. Does council wish to take further action tonight?
I move to appoint Joanna Schill um to fill position number four on the Parks and Rec um Commission with the term expiring January thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven.
Is there a second?
Second.
Sure, okay. Been moved and seconded to appoint of Annie Schill to fill position number four on the Parks and Recreation Commission. Debbie, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, thank you. Um Annie uh has been a long-term resident with Covington since nineteen eighty-two. She um wants to continue to be involved with the community in activities. Um, she's a teacher, more specifically in PE. She loves kids and people. Um, she, when we asked what she would like to see in Covington over the next ten years, she said more recreation activities. And she's excited about the um possibility of the new and improved aquatic center. Um, she wants to be more engaged with the community and things like the Covington days um have her excited. Um, she's say, says that she's reliable and organized and outgoing and she was all of those things. I think she would be a great addition to the Parks and Rec team.
Thank you, Debbie. Joe, would you like to speak to your second?
Yeah, she she said she's been a member of, a member of the Covington community on and off for the last forty years. And to me, that's someone who has left and made made the choice to come back and wants to make this her home. And she wants to be involved. That's what, one of her big things, I just want to be involved and I want to help my community. I want to get to know my my community. And I think that's, that's a very laudable fact. And I think that's how we all wanted to get started. We all wanted to be more involved in our community. It's, we want to make sure the community has great roots and we are, we're leaving something for the next generation. That's what I'm, I was getting from her, so.
Thank you, Joe. Anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? It's been moved and seconded to appoint Annie Schill to fill position number four on the Parks and Recreation Commission with a term expiring January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-seven. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Annie. Does council wish to take further action tonight? Jennifer?
We're all taking turns here. Yeah, lots of positions. Um, I'd like to um move to appoint Jeff Powell to fill position number six on the Parks and Rec Commission with the term expiring January thirty-one, twenty twenty-seven.
Second that?
Second, okay. Been moved and seconded to appoint Jeff Powell to fill position number six. Jennifer, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yeah, um Jeff has learned a lot as he expressed to us in the the comings and goings of the city. And you know, the the slow moving of the way things work. And he's a huge advocate for dog parks as as we all know. And that is, if not the number one, one of the the top requests by our residents. So it's, it's really important to have that passion um for our, you know, four-legged friends in Covington. And uh Jeff has has been a great um advisory and um input to the the Parks and Rec team. So I'm excited to nominate him again for reappointment.
Thank you, Jennifer. Christina, would you like to speak to your second?
Sure, I echo everything Jennifer said. I think Jeff has a wonderful ability to be honest about everything. I like his suggestion about um the better communication about land suggestions between um between the Parks and Rec and potentially staff and and council. And I think he's been doing great and would love to see him continue and see what he'll bring in the next two years.
Great. Thank you. Is there anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? Been moved and seconded to appoint Jeff Powell to fill position number six on the Parks and Recreation Commission with a term expiring January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-seven. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations, Jeff. Next up is new business item number two is to consider an appointment to the planning commission. Does council wish to take action tonight? Beth?
I move to uh appoint Stephanie Hunsicker to fill position number six on the planning commission with a term expiring August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to appoint Stephanie Hunsicker to fill position number six on the planning commission. Beth, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yeah, I think um her background in real uh reality, she connects with people that are coming and going, people that are interested in moving to Covington. I thought she had that interesting comment about currently people leave Covington to go and do something and the idea would be to make Covington strong um and a place to go so that people don't have to leave. Uh, I mean, that's just from a convenience standpoint, community building standpoint. So she has, she checks all of the boxes and understands the bigger picture. And I, you know, that's, she's lived here for fourteen years, so she, she's familiar and she's seen Covington grow and change and wants to continue helping that progress, so.
Great. Thank you, Beth. Debbie, would you like to speak to your second?
Thank you. Um Stephanie is very involved in our community. She's a part of the Chamber of Commerce. And as such, she has, um I think in the last six months, become an ambassador. And she really is an ambassador for our our city, our Chamber of Commerce. She's a business owner. She's a realtor. She understands um the the needs of planning a community based on um that knowledge that she has. And agree with what Beth noted, that um she wants to see this as a strong place for communities to want to or for residents to want to live and grow in. And she's excited in in the growth that we have coming up at with Lake Point. She would like to be a voice in that. Um, I think she would be a a great asset to the planning commission.
Thank you, Debbie. Is there anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? It's been moved and seconded to appoint Stephanie Hunsicker to fill position number six on the planning commission with a term expiring August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Stephanie. Next is new business item number three, consider an appointment to the Human Services Commission. Does council wish to take action tonight? Christina, so Debbie?
I'll let Christina go.
Does everybody want to raise their hand?
Around.
I I move to appoint Brian Chandler to the position number three, Human Services Commission with the term expiring March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you. Been moved and seconded to appoint Brian Chandler to fill position number three on the Human Services Commission. Christina, would you like to speak to your motion, please?
I'd love to. It is amazing to see how involved Brian already is. Sorry, this is a a subject near and dear to my heart and I think to Covington. And I think his expertise and in your, in your application, you wrote that you're passionate. I too am passionate for hurting people, but it's wonderful to see the experience that you have. It's just, it's just awesome to see it both from from the um building relationships on one hand and then to see it from the need to to build the relationships with the people that need it. And you want to make those relationships as well. Um, so I think bringing that into Covington is just something that Covington needs so desperately. And there's, if there's anything that, you know, your heart, you you said several times, um when you were talking about someone, you said, and their heart said, their heart said. And while there's that professional aspect of you too, but there's that heart aspect. And let me speak some tugs to my heartstrings and I'm, I'm glad the nominating you.
Thank you, Christine. Debbie, would you like to speak to your second?
Yes, thank you. Um, Brian has such a passion for people. And like Christina said, when he talked about services, he didn't talk about the specific service. He talked about what is the heart of the the needs of those people. He sees the people and their needs and then the services and then the commission and the city behind it. Um, not the other way around. And we learned more tonight too about what Union Gospel Mission does and and all that he's involved in. But um I think the fact that he's already on the Kent Human Services Commission helps. It it brings um an an outside aspect that we can use. Um, he brought up something tonight that we've never even looked at within our own community. And that is that the kids aging out of foster care, which is a huge need. And it's, uh, it's just not something that we've really had our finger on. Um, but those are, it's that breadth of his um background that will make him an asset to this group. If you have anything more.
Yeah, thank you, Debbie. Is there anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? I just want to say I was very impressed. I always work with businesses and with individuals to survive and thrive, but you took it to a new level. Not just survive, but thrive in their life. That means a lot. You bring hope to people. That just, you, it's just walking into the room, you can tell that you have a passion, that you want to help and bring hope. So I am more than happy to support this nomination. Anybody else? Been moved and seconded to appoint Brian Chandler to fill position number three on the Human Services Commission with a term expiring March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Brian. Next up is new business item number four, consider an ordinance establishing a salary commission. Mark?
Good evening, Mayor Wagner and council. I'm coming back to you tonight. Uh, council requests to bring an ordinance establishing an independent salary commission, which which, when established and convened, will set salaries for council, salaries and benefits for both council and the mayor. So, and this is based upon our our long discussion we had um back in November. And the ordinance does a couple of quick things. And I just wanted to do, walk through it. It's that this, the the commission is not a standing commission. It's not set all the time. Once it is convened, it does its business and then it's done. And each time the council wishes to reconvene the salary commission, you'll, they will go through the process. The salary commission will do its research and studies and make its recommendations, whether to increase, decrease or maintain the status quo for council member salaries and benefits. And another thing that the ordinance includes is that it establishes the ability to convene a salary commission, but retains council's authority to set its own salary if it so chooses, which is currently wi- fully within its power as the legislative authority. And that's pretty much it. The the salary commission, there's, it doesn't create anything right now. It just gives you the opportunity when council wishes to have its salary and benefits uh to be reviewed, that it could establish the salary commission to take a look at that and provide well, changes or no changes that then require no further council action or review.
Thank you, Mark. Does council have any questions for Mark? Beth?
Well, first of all, thank you for the information. I guess the the question is is there a set process for how we would decide whether we were going to have a salary commission for the next round? Or, I mean, here it says we can or not. Do we need to have that set? Or we'll just cross that bridge when we come to it and make that decision?
I think during the process of of budgeting or otherwise, that council could make this motion, make a motion to convene it at any time. It would require council's approval, either through a majority or consensus to say, we want the, to convene the salary commission. And then from there, it follows the process of the mayor selecting five appointees who are then confirmed by the council, which is the prescribed way to do it under state law.
Okay, so it's, it's just providing us with flexibility? And then whenever staff says, hey, it's time to review, council at the time will make a decision whether to.
Correct. You have your discretion. Council has its discretion to choose to evaluate, have the salary commission evaluated or not.
Okay.
I I might just add, it doesn't uh need to depend on when staff is reviewing it either.
Oh, okay.
Also can do it independent of that.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Does council wish to take action tonight?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the proposed ordinance relating to establishment of an independent salary commission in substantial form as presented. Joe, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, so I want to say this started because of early last or last spring at PIC, we were discussing how cities discuss salary ranges for their council. And I hadn't heard about salary commissions because uh the news depresses me and I don't pay attention to what happened to our neighbors in the north when uh Mayor Bernie decided to disband their commission for other, for multiple reasons. But uh then I found out about them and I read the state law and I started talking with Regan. And then I started, and then we had our own, uh we we voted on our uh salary increases here and it was a ginormous jump, to say the least, for us. And I felt like maybe it's time we took this out of our hands. It's time that we let the people of our city decide this by having a commission because it would make it much it would take us out of it and wouldn't make us seem like we're uh just in this for the money, which it's, wasn't a lot of money. We wouldn't have, we wouldn't have been that, you know, we couldn't say we were in it for the money. But the jump was pretty large from what we currently make or currently made at that time. So to me, this makes sense because it's now out of our hands. We just confirm the people that Jeff would appoint and say, yep, we trust these people to make right, smart decisions. They could be already on a commission. They could be be just people who we know from the community or new people we haven't heard from before but want to be involved in something. And this can be their start to helping. I think it's a great idea for us. Again, it takes it out of our hands and it puts it back into the hands of the people who put us here. So we let them decide. I think that's a good move, so.
Thank you, Joe. Jennifer, would you like to speak to your second?
Um, I want to thank uh you for actually bringing this up as an, as an idea because I was horrified at the jump. I know you guys hear me say, you know, it it's gross. I was just raised that politicians don't give themselves more money. It I, it just makes my skin crawl. So I'm happy to have someone else do it, take it. Let us know what you think. Um, and we are elected by our residents, so it makes sense that they make the choice. And um, yeah, I, it it's just a much more transparent ethical way to conduct something such as salary paid by taxpayers. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? Beth?
I I appreciate the flexibility that we have um to have a commission or keep with the status quo. I mean, I think I agree with everything that Joe and Jennifer have said. Any system we have can be, you know, can go sideways, doesn't matter, but at least we have this opportunity to to try something different and um and see how that works. So appreciate the the way it was written and drawn up that.
Anybody else? I just want to say thank you for bringing this back to us, Mark. It um, they, Joe and Jennifer brought up that we did have a salary survey that was for everybody that's listening. There was a salary survey that was done for um staff and and council was included in that. And the large jump that was suggested for council, we as a council did not accept that large, so we lowered it. So that it was more palatable to everybody. But having the salary commission would then take it, like they said, take it out of our hands and put it into the taxpayers' hands. So this is a very good ordinance and I'm happy to support this. Is there anybody else? Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the proposed ordinance relating to establishment of an independent salary commission in substantial form as presented. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ordinance passes. Thank you. Next up is new business item number five, review the council rules of procedures. Mark?
Um, thank you again, Mayor Wagner and council. This is something that is brought to you every even numbered year. And council always has the opportunity to review and revise its rules of procedure. And council always has the opportunity to review and revise its rules of procedure. And oftentimes when something comes up, like in the past few years, remote participation, virtual meetings. We we wanted to get those policies into place before council outside of the normal schedule. But right now, twenty twenty four, January. Um it's where staff just put this on the agenda with some things that have potentially that have come up. That for council discussion and consideration, but there's nothing in here that is required or given any kind of a recommendation. So if council has anything they are interested in changing, then this is the time to discuss that. And these two potential items that are presented, which for uh for more information for council. The two items that have been brought up are city council meetings or public meetings or their meetings in the council. Which is saying they're not meetings of an individual council member, they're not meetings of city staff, they're not meetings of uh of of the of the citizens. They're meetings of the council and that they're limited public forums. And what that means is that certain things that happen and during uh public comment or otherwise can be controlled by the council. And when I say controlled, I mean things like hate speech, racism, things that actually disturb the proper. Functioning and essential duties of council. So those, these are just clarifying something that already exists in state law and constitutional requirements under both federal and state constitutions. It's not changing anything, but it does create, it sets, it clarifies these. So if there's ever a challenge to city policies based upon one of these issues. That we can point back to something and don't have to have go through the argument of of what the law actually means. Because council has already said with this is exactly what we are complying with, which is uh consistent with state and federal law.
I know I normally ask everybody first, but. Mark, I want to thank you for bringing this forward. Uh because of all the hate speech that have been going on, I've listened to council meetings of other cities. I've been at meetings where it's happened. And the shock when it first started. And people didn't, uh it it takes seconds to be able to react to something like that if you're not ready for it. And uh for council, I don't know if you hear how I've changed and worked with Regan and Mark and Krista on. When I state public comment, I've we've now added comments are to be related to city business. And we're always watching and Cole and Mason are always ready. That if something starts going wrong, that's why I've started saying, I'm just going to start singing a Christmas car. To over and above whoever's on the doing that. So it's always, it's like being a boy scout or a girl scout, always being prepared for the unprepared and being ready for it. Hopefully, we never have that issue here because things like that should not happen.
And Mayor Wagner, I think you're approaching this from completely the right perspective, which is. This becomes a problem when cities aren't prepared for it and haven't thought about it. So count, so bringing this up to council is really about saying, hopefully, these things never happen. But if they do, it's clarifies the council's authority and the presiding officer to control a situation that could otherwise. Potentially create something that is not conducive to the conduct of business.
Thank you. This and I didn't mean to go ahead of everybody, but um does council have any questions for Mark? Jennifer.
I'm fine with the suggested changes. I did have another recommended uh change to section five point eight. Uh the order of business, we have changed that and put the reports of commissions up earlier in the um agenda. And so I think we should, if we're making these changes, take the opportunity to uh reflect that in the this policy as well.
Good catch. I thought she was going to say we need cake. Anybody else?
You know, I I mentioned this um to Regan, um to me too. I I completely am on board with the methodology, the reasoning behind it, it makes sense. I I like the way Jeff presents it in the public comment part, that it's related to city business. Because I feel like that that further clarifies, like when I first read the the sentence number one. City council meetings are meetings of the council, not the public. And like we think about residents coming and speaking and and they're part of the public, you know, but it's relating to city business. And if it's not, then it probably it can be censored if we needed it to be. So I wasn't, I wasn't sure how the rest of the council felt about that or read it the first time. Like if I was a resident that didn't come to council council meetings very often and I first read that, I might go hmm. You know, is that meaning I can't come and talk or what? So I don't know if there's a way to make it more.
So the way I take it, and I understand where you're coming from.
Yeah, yeah.
So this is a public meeting held by the council. And we invite the public to speak to us and talk to us. It's not a meeting being held by the public. And that's the way I take it.
And Mayor Wagner, I think this is uh really, it's a term of art based upon case law and precedent. And I'm going to, these are placeholders, I will act, this isn't the actual language that will be inserted into.
Okay.
Policies, because what we want to be able to say is that we are being consistent with with law as it stands.
Sure.
And that this is a council meeting and it's not a meeting of the citizens where things happen. This is a meeting where council conducts business. That's that's what that is intending to say. And I'm happy to also in if with councils, uh council consensus or approval to the change to five point eight. And adding city business to uh the section as well.
Counsel, this counsel, okay, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All very good points. Thank you, Mark.
Yeah, council consensus to.
Yes, council consensus to bring that this back at a future date for approval.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. All right, that concludes our new business. Looking at future agenda, uh we do have a um our summit this Saturday here at Covington City Hall. At uh eight AM, seven thirty if you want to food before that. And this council, and then our next meeting will be on Tuesday, February thirteenth, luckily not on February fourteenth. Council have anything else that they'd like to see in the future? All right, we'll move into council staff comments. Chief.
Um thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Uh just a few hours ago, we had a retail theft conference with our major retailers. We had sixteen uh asset protection people meet with uh Detective Ramirez and Deputy Welch. Our goal in this is to increase reporting from the retailers about shoplifting and other theft they have. With the goal being that we can better charge organized retail theft, which is a felony. Uh as opposed to theft three, which is what we commonly charge for most of these. Um the goal is if the retailers have reported multiple thefts by the same person and maybe they haven't identified them. We later identify them, we can go back, pull those and aggregate all of them into organized retail theft. Hopefully making Covington a little less desirable to come steal. So um retail were very on board with it, we provided some training on report writing and some other things that would assist us in those. Uh and we've also working, we're working with them to uh better network together just here in Covington. So uh we have a big shout out to most of our retailers that showed up, we really appreciate it. And then secondly, um GISA Credit Union awarded us a grant, the Local Heroes Grant. They're coming tomorrow to film and take photographs. I I hope it's not just of me because that'd be bad for them. But uh we are going to be showing off a um drone. It's not the one that we purchased because we haven't purchased it yet, but we'll be showing one off that King County uses. Uh and they are fantastic piece of equipment uh to use. And we've used one recently, we've used King County's to assist us in a uh weapon at a school call. It was very nice, very helpful, so that's it.
Thank you. Any questions for Adam? Thank you, Chief. Ethan.
Uh good evening, Mayor and Council. Just one update or a bit of a point of clarification. Uh Laura gave a nice update from the Parks and Rec Commission and she mentioned that Founder's Park construction is. Uh progressing nicely. Uh we, I do want to clarify that there is not a a opening date yet for that park. Uh it's going to be challenging to hydro seed and have grass kind of grow in this time of year. So uh we're planning on keeping that park closed until that grass and lawn area, which is a significant part of the park, uh is established. Uh so we kind of anticipate springtime, we'll kind of just see, have to see how weather cooperates or doesn't with us. Um but as soon as we have a date, we'll share that with council and we'll do a nice ribbon cutting ceremony as well. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Ethan. Dawn.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just wanted to let you know that our five sixteen project uh successfully uh set all the girders for that. So that's a big milestone for that, that's basically getting all of those set, obviously for the entire bridge. So they'll be able to complete that um south side of the bridge now, so just wanted to give that update.
Great, thank you, Dawn. Selena.
Good evening, Council, nothing from me tonight.
Thank you, Selena. Uh Casey's not here, so Mark.
There's no executive session tonight and I have no additional report, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Regan.
Just a little bit more on how cool that police drone is. So A- Adam said that it helped them find the weapon at the school. It senses a heat signature and there was still a heat signature on that gun that had been thrown in the bushes.
No.
And they identified it like that, I mean, that's pretty cool, so this is going.
Yeah, it was an airsoft gun, so we don't.
But still, the drone's cool. Just wanted to share that.
Regan near it.
I do have a question on that. Does that drone work indoors at a school if needed or is it strictly outdoors? I don't, I don't know how drones work.
That's a great question, I don't have an answer. Uh I know they are, there are some that are capable of going indoors. Um so it may involve like a signal from the operator to the drone.
Okay.
That might be the only issue that I can think of, but I know in other scenarios, they're used to go fly in open windows and check. Before we go into the house, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you. Krista.
I look forward to seeing you on Saturday.
Perfect, thank you, Krista. Start with Joe.
Oh. So. Started with me like four weeks in a row last year, but uh no, the. I'm happy we all survived the the ice. I did have to go out on Wednesday morning because I got a text message from my boss, hey, we're all working from home. So if you go home, you know, let me know, because I was off the day before and left my computer at work, so that was fun. I got to drive to Auburn just to drive back home, so got to test our roads and saw a truck almost spin out on one eighty in front of the shop. It's like, you think they would advise that place right away, but it was funny to see. Nevertheless, I I'm thankful for our team for get keeping the roads clear. And in personal news, uh it is getting closer for me to start student teaching and how do I know? I quit my job on Saturday, last Saturday, my last day there is the eighth. And I start student teaching on the twelfth, so um if any of you feel like uh helping the needy, that will be me. Because I will not have a job for a few months and I I am the needy at this point. Uh I do enjoy food, pizza is a a plus, if y'all want to bring me some pizza, that's great. Uh no, in reality, I am very nervous, I've actually already got a project lined up for the students. They all get to have to read a book. I'm not sure how many of them have held a physical book lately, but it's going to be fun. And it's, I'm getting nervous, so uh y'all keep me in your prayers, I'm going to go crazy in the next few months, so. Oh, and I got my invitation for graduation and my application for graduation. So uh and I can walk, it's just going to cost me a lot of money to get to Arizona and then I have to pay a hundred fifty dollars to make sure I can get my diploma eventually, so.
So first off, congratulations.
Thank you.
Uh which school are you going to be student teaching at?
I will be at Kent Lake.
Okay, and which teacher?
Uh Mr. Fowler.
Well, congratulations, I'm sure the students of Kent Lake will enjoy having you as their student teacher, you'll do a great job.
Pretty cute.
Jennifer.
Um I don't have anything really to say, except I'm looking forward to Saturday, it's always a productive, fun. I like the casualness of it, not having to do all of the rules of order, so uh yeah. Looking forward to seeing you all.
Thank you, Jennifer. Debbie.
Thank you, I'm looking forward to Saturday as well, it'll be my second time, so this time I don't get to use the, I'm the new kid. Uh on skateboard, we have elected our chair and co-chair for the year, voted on our legislative agenda. And if anyone would like to see that, just let Krista know and I'll send it out. Um and then I I made this comment to Katie earlier when she gave the youth council update. But I really admire the our our whole group of youth, I mean, they're just admirable. Uh future leaders and I love their challenge of the the great kindness challenge. So I think that we should come up with our own little checklist of things to do. Because I've read through theirs and they're very student oriented, it's, you know, giving a compliment to a fellow student or or heaven forbid to a teacher. But we could have our own, so anyway, it runs through the twenty ninth, I think. Um so we'll just spread a little love.
Thank you, Debbie. Beth.
Looking forward to summit and uh city action days uh with AWC down in Olympia. That's only like two weeks away. Um getting a chance to connect with with other local electeds and um city staff and our elected officials. So um fun times there. JRC, we we won't have another um Joint Recommendations Committee meeting until uh the end of February. It'll be consortium wide with all the uh JRC and the the home cities, which are. Basically cities within King County that receive different pots of money from um. From the federal government based on on their needs, so more news of eleven on what comes up from that. But um yeah, and thanks again to the road road crew as ever, keeping us safe.
Thank you, Beth. Christina.
Thank you for swapping it out tonight.
Later this year as I really mix things up.
Suspenseful. First of all, what an awesome team you guys are. Um it's just an honor to work with each and every one of you and thank you for tolerating me and my changing hormones. Although I think I still would have cried because seriously, that is just worth the tears. Um I love what we did today. Yeah, very successful meeting and I'm very much looking forward to Saturday, so much so. And thank you for bringing up how casual it is that maybe, just maybe Eliana might join us for half of it.
That would be the best.
If you guys are okay with it, I kind of got permission from some of the staff, but uh if she she's actually really nice, she's kind, she may want to talk. That's the only thing, but anyway, I'm looking forward to seeing every one of you, really.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um I just have uh three things. One, uh Sound Cities Association, we as a city have been a member of Sound Cities since it began. So twenty plus years ago. And we have had um Margaret's been on the board, Marla Moon's been on the board, I've been on the board. Joe will be on the board when he is chair of PIG. But I get to say congratulations to Regan. He is going to be the city manager representative on the SCA board for the next two years. So Covington has a longstanding of being on the SCA board and helping direct. Policy to help South King County, so congratulations, Regan. Yep, looking forward to hearing all the great stuff that you continue to do there. Um Union Gospel Mission, thank you, that was a great presentation. And I am just really looking forward to to being more involved and hearing more about what Union Gospel Mission can do. The passion and the the servitude and working with partners with like Real Life Church and the storehouse and other organizations. So I appreciate that and thank you for you and Scott for taking the time to meet with me the other day to really give me an in-depth. Update on that, I appreciate that and thank you for allowing him to do that as well. Um Monday, this last Monday, I had the pleasure of meeting with the new consulate general of India. Who is setting up an embassy in Seattle. Prakash Gupta. And he presented. This, I'll stand up. Which is the Indian flag colors, I know I'm not going to put it on right, that's why he had to. Do it. But he had, he had one on as well, so this is for us here at the city. So this is um. I can't remember what they call it, but this was nice. I can't remember what they call it, but this was nice. And a shirt that will actually fit, so and it's made out of um. But. And it's nice that they're opening up an embassy in in uh Seattle. Uh, a lot of uh. Residents have moved to the Kent's uh Covington, South King County uh area. And uh looking forward to continuing.
Where was the closest one before that?
I didn't, I forgot to ask.
Just curious, I know sometimes people have to go out of state and different things.
I believe it might have been California, but they've had a lot of um. Residents moving into the Seattle area and a lot of them are moving from the east side down into South King County as well.
He really did his homework, I'm sure.
Uh, that is all I have. Uh, so we'll move into our second public comment period. Speakers will state their name, address and organization. Comments are directed to the city council, not the audience or staff. Comments are to be related to city business. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate and are limited to no more than four minutes per speaker. For attendees participating virtually, click the raise hand button in Zoom. For attendees participating by phones, dial star nine to raise your hand. Once the city grants you permission to speak, press unmute if participating virtually or dial star six to unmute if participating by phone. Notice to all participants pursuant to state law, RCW forty two dot one seven eight dot five five five. Campaigning for any ballot measure or candidate in city hall and or during. Any portion of the council meeting, including the audience comment portion of the meeting is prohibited. Is there anybody in the audience wishing to address council this evening? Is there anybody online wishing to address council? Please raise your hand. Seeing nobody uh step up to the podium or raise their hand, this meeting is adjourned at eight fourteen. Thank you all very much.